Good evening. Everybody ready? Okay. So, I will call to order the public hearing for the Planning Board for the Town of Concord tonight. And we are going to be reviewing the nine warrant articles that the Planning Board plans to move at this year's annual town meeting. And the way this will work is we will have a member of the Planning Board present the article on the screen behind me. And then we'll open it up for questions or clarifications on the various warrant articles that we're presenting and have a chance to discuss them. And then we'll move in sequence through each of the nine. And if Elizabeth is ready, we'll go ahead and begin. Dive right in with Article 29. Matthew Johnson is going to be presenting that on behalf of the Planning Board, and I will let him go to the podium and begin.
Pardon, Matt. Is that good room?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do I need to mention that we're recording this? We are recording this meeting. Anybody else is welcome to record, but you need to inform us if you are recording this.
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
Yeah.
So, I'm presenting Article 29. It's the Concord Center Formula Business Bylaw Amendment. So, let me just give you a little background on this. First of all, in 2011, Town Meeting passed a formula business bylaw for West Concord Village. So, it included a definition of what a formula business is, and I will reprise that with you during this presentation. It also defined a limit of 10 formula businesses in these two districts, West Concord Business and West Concord Village. And the limit is for the combination of those two districts. And then the third thing is it established a special permit process. And that's for putting in any new formula business and/or relocating or expanding it. So, let's go ahead and see where we're going next. So, what we're proposing to do at Town Meeting this year is to add the Concord Center Business District to this bylaw section. And what we would do is have a separate limit of 12 formula businesses for the Concord Center Business District. We're not going to be changing the definition of what a formula business is or what the special permit process is with this bylaw amendment. Really, all we are doing is adding a new district. Now, you'll see that technically what we're going to do is replace the entire section because it's too complicated to restate all these different district names with, you know, lots of edits. So, where is the Concord Center Business District? Well, I think a lot of people would refer to this area as like the Mill Dam. It is bordered by Kai's Road heading north, and then east to west, it's bisected by Main Street, and it includes that intersection of Main Street and Walden Street. So, it's really the very heart of the commercial district of Concord Center. It's a relatively compact area, but it is the primary retail district of Concord Center. So, what is a formula business? It may not be a familiar term to you. But formula business actually separates the commonness of a bunch of locations of the same kind of business from the notion of the ownership of that business. So, in this case, what we're talking about is a type of business activity that maintains two or more of these standardized features. Okay? So, do these locations have the same array of services, merchandise, or menus if they're a restaurant, for example? Do they share a trademark, a logo, service mark, or symbol that's visible? Do they all have the similar decor or logo or service mark or, sorry, layout or color scheme? Do they have people all wearing the same kind of uniforms? Or do they have the same kind of sign? Now, just having one of these features that's common across a bunch of locations doesn't make something a formula business. It's only if there are two or more of those features. So, the idea of a formula business is that it's a feeling of sameness. And formula businesses actually have great advantages in that that sameness gives you a kind of comfort and convenience. So, if you're looking for your skinny soy latte for Starbucks, you can go to any Starbucks, pretty much, and find that product. And so, it makes the sort of product or process independent of location. And that's a great thing if you're really looking for that soy latte. The place where it gets complicated is if you have a place like Concord Center that has a very distinctive personality as a place. It's 350-plus years of history, cultural district, one of the first in Massachusetts. And so, to the extent that you have businesses whose features are independent of place, it dilutes the sense of particularness of place that a place like Concord Center has. So, Concord Center isn't a, like, Sturbridge Village or something. It's not a museum. However, and in fact, since probably there were formula businesses, there have been formula businesses in Concord Center. Woolworths, for example, for many years. But to the extent that we have more and more formula businesses in Concord Center, that the preponderance of them could take away from the specific character of the district. And that's what this bylaw is about, is to ensure that that won't happen. So, one other key feature of the formula business definition here is that we state, first of all, how many locations you have to have in order to qualify as a formula business. If you just have a handful, you're not a formula business. You're not sort of, you don't have enough notoriety yet. So, we stated 15 is the limit, the minimum number. And then the second thing that's really key is that we distinguish between the ownership and location. So, basically, any business can be a formula business, even if it's an independent business, as long as it operates in a synchronized way with other businesses. So, it applies to any business that operates as a formula, whether it's a chain store or an independent business or a franchise or anything in between. So, which are the formula businesses that are in Concord Center? Well, presently, there are 10 of these businesses. So, as you can see, there are a set of banks, real estate companies, Cafe Nero, and clothing stores for the most part, as well as, so you can see the kinds of businesses that we have. There are a number of other businesses, such as Winston Flowers and Irresistables and even Carmella's in Concord Center that have fewer than 15 locations, so they are not formula businesses at this time. So, the purpose of the bylaw is to preserve the existing character, diversity and variety and scale of the district, which is vital to the continuation of Concord's ability to attract both residents and visitors. It's a tourist destination. We want to protect that. So, what is specifically special about Concord Center? And it's important that we enumerate this. Challenges to formula business bylaws have been successful when the district that is under the formula business designation doesn't really have a justifiable character to preserve. So, in this case, Concord Center is obviously very historic. It gets about a million tourists a year. It has a very classic New England character. It also has a lot of cultural assets, so bookstores and so on. And it has also been recognized as one of the first cultural districts in Massachusetts. So, we think there is an adequate reason here to have such a protection. And indeed, this is not necessarily a Planning Board initiative. This is really a recommendation coming out of the Comprehensive Long Range Plan that was completed last year in Concord, which gave a action, which was to adopt zoning and other alternatives to protect unique features of existing village centers. You know, for example, the potential expansion of the existing formula business bylaw complemented by other fee incentives and options. Now, the Planning Board's role is the zoning part of this. There clearly are other incentives that could be used to help encourage the distinctiveness of our business centers, and we certainly have activities going in that direction. So, the last point in the presentation is why to replace a whole section. Like I said, because we now are referring both to West Concord Village as well as to Concord Center, all those different references and changes really make it messy to show a bylaw amendment with those individual changes. So, we're just replacing the section. But the content is the same. Special permit criteria are identical. The definition of formula business is even in a different section of the bylaw. It's not even being touched by this.
formula businesses.
But what is being added is the reference to Concord Center and that limit of 12 businesses
I think there were two more banks that needed to be mentioned and one more real estate agency, or maybe two other real estate agencies. So, that gets you, I think, over 12.
for that district.
Stand a little closer to the microphone, please.
Okay.
I don't think that's possible.
So, I think here we can open it up to Q and A.
That is possible, yeah. That's much better. Or clarifications or, you know, suggestions for the presentation at Town Meeting. Makes a big difference. You have to be really close.
I can't be this close and talk. So, anyway, when the Wellfleet decision was handed down by the land court in 2015, I
Can you ask me for?
Sure.
Yeah. Approach the mic, and if you can state your name and address.
sent an email to John Minty, who was the building inspector at the time, and said to him, "The
The microphone's right behind you, actually. Oh. Thanks. Karen.
Thank you. I'm Henry Dane. I live at 58 Everett Street. formula business bylaw is dead." And then we followed up on that conversation and pointed out that if it was still on the books, he and the Board of Appeals would be required to enforce it, whether they thought it was legal or not. And that would lead to an appeal by the applicant, which would have to be defended by the town and at the town's expense, and the town would almost certainly lose based on the Wellfleet decision. If you look at the materials I gave you, the exhibit at the end is a comparison of the Wellfleet and the Concord existing bylaw, which is not being changed except for the area being covered and the number. But if you look at the definitions of our bylaw on Exhibit B, "Array of Services and/or Merchandise or Menus," " Trademark," "Logo," "Services," "Mark or Symbol," "Decor,"[756.88][756.88]"Architecture Layout or Color Scheme," and "Uniforms and Signs," and look at the definitions for the Wellfleet bylaw where "Standardized Formula Array of Merchandise," "Exterior Trademark or Service Mark," et cetera, "Architecture Facade," and all that. And in the Wellfleet decision, the land court saw right through it. They knew what Wellfleet was trying to do. They were trying to find a way to, in fact, keep out chain stores, national brands, and so on, without having to refer to the ownership, which was clearly not going to fly. So, they said in that decision that the analysis begins with the basic truth. Zoning can only deal with use without regard to the ownership of the property involved or who may be the operator of the use. The question becomes, does a store, simply because it is one of 25, which is what was the case in Wellfleet, or more, with the same name and/or sales format, use land differently? Or for another, or to put it another way, have materially different use-related impacts than a store that is not? And then they concluded that the formula business bylaw is invalid because these requirements do not apply to non-formula businesses doing precisely the same things in precisely the same location and precisely the same way. I hasten to mention that the Wellfleet bylaw had also been approved by the Attorney General as our original one had been approved by the Attorney General before the Wellfleet decision was made. And when I raised these questions earlier, I was directed to the two decisions of the Attorney General with regard to the Eastham and the Providence zoning by, formula business bylaws.
I believe it's Province Town.
Excuse me?
Province Town.
Province Town.
Yeah. Providence wouldn't be in Massachusetts.
It would be the same. Decision would have been the same, except it was a different state, you know? They said that they advised that although they had to approve them because they were not clearly contrary to law, they advised that the towns consider, with our town council, what would be the appropriate changes or amendments to them. There's another factor that I think that has not been considered. So, I think that if you pass this bylaw and you expand, its application into an area where there is more economic pressure, which there is in Concord Center, and there already exists the amount, the number of locations that are formula that fit your definition, you're putting yourself in a position where the town is going to have to defend something that is really clearly indefensible. The, I want to also point out something about the definition, the current definition of the formula bylaw. In the, it's not in Section 3.3, but it is in the definitions section of the bylaw. And it's on the other side of this piece of paper. It doesn't just refer to, like, retail stores or new buildings. It applies to, "Formula business is a type of business activity." That would mean not even something that might require a building permit. For instance, an office of a large brokerage firm might move into the second floor of an office building in Concord Center. They would need a special permit for that. And it applies to any activity that has any of these indications that they might be similar to other businesses. And I think also, the question is, who decides whether the uniforms are similar and whether the menu is the same and whether, how many other places have the same menu? And does the places that have the same menu have to be from a similar company? They might be--
The building commissioner does.
Building inspections--
Well, but there's no standard for that. And for the same reason that virtually the fast food bylaw has never been enforced in this town, that the building commissioner has never really seen that there, it was almost impossible to determine whether somebody met the criteria that were in place. So, it seems to me that if you were asking my advice, which I know you're not doing, but I'll give it to you anyway, I think that you would be well-advised to actually start in the direction of getting the existing bylaw repealed rather than extending its scope before you have to actually enforce it and find that you're involved in a legal battle you can't win. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes. So, just to reply, actually, I don't know if we can bring up a backup slide that I have. Slide 18. So, I think I would agree that Wellfleet, in its application of its bylaw, was quite capricious. There also were flaws in their bylaw that our bylaw fortunately does not have. And also, we don't have a capricious intent of trying to limit or eliminate chain stores. So, let me just enumerate three different problems that the court found with the Wellfleet bylaw. First of all, Wellfleet defined their formula businesses in terms of ownership. So, they were regulating commerce. They say, you know, that the business was under a contractual agreement to operate in a certain way. Okay? Our bylaw actually explicitly disavows that and states that this is regardless of ownership, regardless of any agreements. Secondly, that the bylaw in Wellfleet did not treat all businesses uniformly because it singled out chain stores, those organizations that were owned that way. Instead, Concord's bylaw applies to any business with substantially the same features as 15 of any other type of establishment. What's more is Concord's bylaw explicitly allows a business to modify their means of operation in order to comply. So, a great example of this, a recent example, was in Cambridge in Central Square where Amazon operated a pickup center. And Amazon changed their logo in order to be able to operate there because they no longer were a formula business. Their location was unique. And so, the same sort of thing. If a Starbucks decided, they could still call themselves Starbucks, but if they offered the Minuteman latte, okay, and had a totally different menu that was unique to Concord and gave you a reason to come to the Starbucks in Concord, because you don't go to the Starbucks in Concord because they make a specially good soy latte. It's because you go to the exact, get the same exact soy latte anywhere. The idea here is create a reason to be in Concord. Okay? And so, whether or not you are a massive chain or you're just one store, we're trying to encourage that behavior. The third thing is that there were not clear special permit criteria. So, while you have the same notion of that there are references to character, diversity, and architecture, we make qualifying statements where we define what we mean by character in Concord Center, and it's encoded in the bylaw. So, these are three very different things that call out individually the issues that the court raised and invalidated Wellfleet's bylaw that are not the issues that we have.
Ma'am?
Hi. Carlin Reed, 83 Witsand. I'm a little confused about the map. So, Matt, if you don't mind, could you put up the map for Concord Center? Thank you. All right. Now, along Walden Street, am I correct that the Walden Street doesn't go as far as the Verizon Central Office?
That's right. It stops well short of that.
Because the Verizon Office is off the map on Walden Street.
Yeah.
But the perimeter, the old, what was it, the TD Bank Garden Building?
Is not included.
That's not included, and that's--
That's a special limited business district.
And that's the little purple square up there?
That's right.
Or by the purple square?
At the bottom right corner.
Bottom right. Okay. So, it's basically to the left of that. All right. Could you walk me through what would happen if, say, Helen's, which is not a formula business, decided to up and sell? I hope they never do. But if they up and sell to somebody else, how would that, what kind of entity could go into the spot where Helen's is right now?
Well, of course, there would, if there was a change of use, they would need to get some sort of permit.
Okay. But as far as the formula?
No. Any other restaurant could go in there. And the thing is that the intent of our limit is to establish a limit that is above, about 20% above, what the current count of formula businesses is.
Okay.
So, there is no, you know, immediate effect. And in fact, we wanted to give commercial flexibility. We think that the town can accommodate some more formula businesses. We're not trying to, you know, vilify formula businesses.
I understand.
We're just trying to say we don't want a preponderance of them.
And I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of this. So, if Helen's switches up, anything can go in there, formula or not.
Yeah.
Okay. If a formula business goes, decides to leave--
Yeah.
What can go into that slot?
Anything.
Anything can. Okay. You just can't exceed the cap of 12, is that right?
That's the right--
And right now, there are 10?
That's our count, I guess.
Right now? Okay. All right. And then, again, the boundary's on Main Street. What's the last building on the left-hand side-ish that's included on Main Street? I'm sorry, which one? Is that the Colonial Store on the Main Street?
Fritz &amp; Gigi's?
There, that's like the bookstop, right? Yeah. Isn't that the used bookstore in the--
No.
Okay.
All right. That's the problem with the map.
Yeah.
You don't know what the boundaries are. It's not easily identifiable.
Okay.
So, my suggestion is-- Town Meeting, we should put identifiers.
Put a couple little sign markers, and I think it'd make it a lot clearer at Town Meeting for that.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you very much.
That's great input.
Hi. My name's Garrett Whitney, and 296 Heathbridge Road. So, I shared this once before in a debate about West Concord, and it's basically that I have a personal history with a town where I grew up, which did not have a formula business bylaw and which, in my opinion, suffered because of that. Some years back, I took, I grew up in Oyster Bay, Long Island, on the north shore of Long Island. It's a town sort of Concord-sized, beautiful place to grow up, proud revolutionary history, tourism, not Walden, but, or the museums, but in our case, down there, it was Teddy Roosevelt's home at Sagamore Hill. So, there were tourists coming during the summer particularly. The town I grew up in had all sorts of businesses, all sorts of shops, all different expenses of shops. But the town that I went back to when I took my kids down to see the place that I grew up later, probably about 10 years ago, had basically banks and real estate companies and a couple of fast food restaurants. And there really wasn't any reason for the tourists going to Sagamore Hill, and there were, you know, a good number of them. They sell out every day, multiple tours, to stop in the town, that you drive through. And I think that's what can happen when a wealthy town, which naturally attracts businesses that want to sell to the clientele who's there, is left unregulated. So, I think this is a great balance. I, of course, would do it a little tighter, but it's great that what you guys have done. And I just want to commend you for that, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much.
Hi. Janet Lawson from 90 Lee Drive in Concord. I'd like to say that I also strongly appreciate this motion, this bylaw. And so, Garrett mentioned tourism, and that's certainly important to the vitality of the town. But I really think it's a, we are stewards of the history here, and it's just critical that we maintain this character for people to come and appreciate, not just to spend money, but to actually get a sense of history. And it's why we moved here. We really feel close to it. And so, I'm very grateful for this protection. And the other thing I'd like to say is I'm in Concord, Kan. We've had extensive discussion of this bylaw, and Concord, Kan has voted 100% that we all support it. And a lot of the reason for that is our membership and people who come to our coffees have strongly-- in the town, that you drive through. And I think that's what can happen when a wealthy town, which naturally attracts businesses that want to sell to the clientele who's there, is left unregulated. So, I think this is a great balance. I, of course, would do it a little tighter, but it's great that what you guys have done. And I just want to commend you for that, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much.
Hi, Janet Lawson from 90 Lee Drive in Concord. I'd like to say that I also strongly appreciate this motion, this bylaw. And so, Garrett mentioned tourism, and that's certainly important to the vitality of the town. But I really think it's a, we are stewards of the history here, and it's just critical that we maintain this character for people to come and appreciate, not just to spend money, but to actually get a sense of history. And it's why we moved here, we really feel close to it. And so, I'm very grateful for this protection. And the other thing I'd like to say is I'm in Concord Can. We've had extensive discussion of this bylaw, and Concord Can has voted 100% that we all support it. And a lot of the reason for that is our membership and people who come to our coffees have strongly supported this, maintaining the character of the town. Thanks.
Susan Bates, Concord Green. I just have a question. Vanderhof's is a true value store, but that's not on your list. And Rocky's is a true value store, which would probably be on the list if it were in the district.
So, I think that it gets back to the definition in where it's the two or more characteristics. And so, certainly, as a true value store, they display the logo. But if you go to Vanderhof's, it's, of course, in every other respect, you know, pretty unique assortment of goods and, yeah, operation.
So, it doesn't meet the criteria for product type or what is, I can't remember the criteria where?
So, if we go back to the definition, which I think might even be the prior slide, or maybe it's the one after this, it basically talks about the kind of trademark symbols that are displayed, the assortment or variety of product, you know, and other characteristics like uniforms that would be, you know, uniform across all of those locations.
Okay.
So, that's why just being a member of a franchise and sourcing goods from something and displaying their logo doesn't make you a formula business.
Okay. Well, I agree that there's no other place like Vanderhof's. And Scott said, people come in and they go, is that a rotary phone? And he goes, yeah, yeah, that's what I get my phone calls on. So, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Isn't it the two or more is?
The two or more, that's the idea.
It meets one of the definition, not two or more.
Susan Winter, 128 Nimrod Drive. I moved to Concord because it reminded me of my hometown where I grew up. And as the woman said before, we are stewards of the town, and I think the bylaw does a wonderful job in trying to protect the town. Even the film industry realizes the uniqueness of this town and comes here to use it as the proverbial New England town. So, thank you very much for creating this.
Hi, I'm Elise Woodward. I live on Garfield Road, and I was with Gary, was co-chair of the Comprehensive Long Range Plan. So, I'd like to say that I think that this formula business bylaw was anticipated by the Comprehensive Long Range Plan, as you noted. And it does, it is one tool that we in Concord have to support the goals of the Long Range Plan. With that being said, I would say that it would be helpful, I think, in your presentation if you could acknowledge what, or comment on what changes we might see if this article is approved. And although the Comprehensive Long Range Plan received really strong comments from citizens in support of a formula business bylaw, it was not unanimous. So, I do think that the tensions that exist around a formula business bylaw could be included in your presentation as well, just sort of upfront and center to acknowledge what some of those tensions are, similarly to the information you had about the comparison between the Wellfleet formula business and Concord's.
So, Elise, you were mentioning what changes we might see if it were passed. I guess I'm trying to understand what you're alluding to there, because, I mean, I think that the?
I think just from a logistical standpoint, so we?
So, you mean that there are special permit criteria?
As a special permit, or, you know, would the planning board or the building inspector expect to see, you know, anything different about the approval process for, you know, businesses coming into this Concord Center?
Okay. All right, thanks.
I've lived in Concord for 50 years, and I am very nostalgic about a lot of the changes that have taken place in this town, and really miss a lot of the things that were here when I first came to Concord. The Woolworths on Walden Street, the two drugstores on the corner of Walden and Main Street, the music store, Moran Mountain, Colton's, the Nellie Craig, all of these stores that were here, all those businesses that were here, were, the toy shop that was located on Walden Street, Mrs. Pratt, Anderson Photo, you name it, Dalton &amp; Robinson, appliance store, Smitty's Hardware Store, right where Barrett Real Estate is now, Sharp &amp; Lawnmowers. I loved all those places. And, but nostalgia is not going to fill stores. And preventing people who can pay the rent and can stimulate business and keep a vibrant business area so that the smaller businesses have traffic is going to be, is not going to be an effective way to fill real estate. And you saw how hard it was with the friend block to find tenants to move into that building, and how long it took for them to fill. And the major tenants there were formula businesses. And I don't think that anybody is unhappy about their being there. I'd rather see the toy store at the corner where it was before, or actually, I'd rather see Snow's Pharmacy's back there. But that isn't going to happen, and this bylaw isn't going to make it happen. It's going to, it's more likely to give you empty real estate than it is to give you successful small business.
Okay, I think, are we done? Are we, you got one more comment, or two? Okay?
Mary White, 221 Monson Road. We've had visitors visit us from other cities and states and countries, and they all applaud the way Concord has protected its center and the beauty of this town. I grew up in a little town that had a downtown center in Georgia. Now, it's nothing but big box stores all over the place. The center is gone. We made trips to the southwest and loved the towns of Albuquerque, Santa Fe, and Taos. And then, we had heard so much about Sedona. But when we got to Sedona, it was like, here's the American town. It was nothing but formula businesses everywhere. There was nothing unique or fun or exciting or historic about the place. So, I'd like to thank the planning board for all the work that you've put in to this bylaw. And I wish you well in passing at the town meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Higgins. I live on Cottage Lane. I'm also president of the Concord Business Partnership, and I'm here speaking somewhat on their behalf and on my behalf, and I want to echo the, I thank the board for all the work you guys do. It's a lot of work to be on a board, and I think it's marvelous when I look at West Concord and I see the approval that the residential community on Beharal got, and the shot in the arm that's done to the West Concord Business District, and the fact that you worked with a restaurant there, local people, and got a nice restaurant going there, and that also adds to the vitality. I stand here only questioning not your motives and not the fact that I don't think anyone in this room, or probably most 99% of people in this town, want to see formula businesses. And we can call them whatever, but we really don't want to see chain stores, which are a subset of the formula business, in our center at all. But what I did, I'm concerned about the health of the business community, and I don't want something to adversely affect that that's unforeseen. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that I did talk with two lending officers of major commercial lending firms, banks, and I asked them about, and this is common sense, so it's not a revelation that everybody's going to, jaw's going to drop, but, you know, if they were going to lend to an owner, would it, would they be more apt to lend if it had a formula business, chain store? And of course, the answer was yes. And I point that out because I'm concerned that the little landlord could potentially be hurt here. I think what we want to protect is the small shop owner and the individual landowners that own maybe three or four storefronts, not the big ones. And I think we want them to be able to borrow funds. And the follow-up question I asked was, well, if you had a potential business that wanted to go in and came in front of you and they wanted a loan, and everything else was constant, and there was a formula business, chain store in there, or not, which one would you be prone to lend to? And common sense, the answer was that it would be the one that had the formula business because it'd be a more stable lending opportunity. So, I think business community is an ecosystem, and we're tricking with that ecosystem right now. And I don't know the answer. I'm not here to tell you that formula business is going to be detrimental and when the business community is going to fall apart. I don't think that's going to happen. But I do want to caution that we ought to think about the health of the business community. What will this happen? How much investigating have we done of that? How have we done that investigation? Are we just, I mean, I'm not arguing any of the legalities or anything, but I am concerned that we may put some landowners and some small businesses in a predicament where they maybe can't afford to be there. And that's not what I think any of us want. Thank you very much.
I guess I would just make one final comment, which I think that we do have some experience with the West Concord bylaw. And, you know, if anything, that bylaw, I think the number of formula businesses remain fairly stable. The same thing with Concord Center. Over the years, in recent times anyway, it's been a fairly stable number. So, my hope is actually that this bylaw never really is invoked just simply by the inertia of how our businesses are run, and that Concord maintains its characters mostly on a voluntary basis. And we hope that will continue. This is really mostly an insurance policy. Okay, I think we ought to move on to the other amendments that we have proposed tonight. Thanks very much for your input.
Thanks, Matt. Moving on to Article 30, I'm presenting this one. It's Personal Wireless Communication Facility Overlay District Map, an amendment to our wireless overlay bylaw. This warrant article will expand the current wireless overlay district for Concord specifically around the property at 1400 Lowell Road, which is the Middlesex School. The map in front of you shows in pink the existing wireless overlay district in this part of Concord, as well as in, I guess, gray dots, a area that represents a proposed expansion to the district in that area. Some background, at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting last year, the planning board urged no action on a very, very similar citizens petition to expand the wireless overlay district at this, almost this same location. At that time, the planning board urged no action because there had been no comprehensive process for vetting the bylaw amendment. The planning board reviewed the expansion of the district at three public meetings since that time, and basically has recommended an expansion of the district in this location because we feel that it might enable consideration of additional options for wireless services that are consistent with the general requirements described in our wireless overlay bylaw. So, whereas we were not necessarily comfortable moving forward with a unrevealed citizen petition last year, having gone through due process, the planning board is moving that we take affirmative action on a very similar article this year as printed in the warrant. Any questions? Or clarifications? Mr. Crozier? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Matt Crozier. I live at 108 Barrett Smol Road. I'm also the chief operating officer of Middlesex School at 1400 Lowell Road. Obviously, I was president of town meeting last year. I'm only here for, to just publicly on the record state to, for the board's benefit and for the benefit of folks that are here, and I'll do it at a town meeting as well. This is not an expansion that was requested by Middlesex School, the property owner at 1400 Lowell Road, nor was Middlesex School informed of any of the public meetings in a formal fashion. We very much respect the board's work, very much personally respect the work that Elizabeth and Marcia do, and think that as a school, we work carefully to try to make sure that we follow the appropriate procedures of the boards in town, and just wanted to state for the record my personal dissatisfaction with not having been informed about the nature of the hearings. Thank you.
Julie Dalzbrall, Barkis Farm Road. I don't know if the planning department or the town moderator could just clarify what the public notice-like requirements are for a town meeting to respond to his comments about notice?
For a town meeting or for review of warrant articles?
Well, I guess preparation for a town meeting is what?
I mean, do you want to take it, Carmen?
Good evening, Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street, town moderator. So, our process for the annual town meeting warrant is that the warrant is opened by the select board, and a notice of that opening is published in December. The warrant stays open for just about a month, closes in January, early January. And citizens may place petitions on that warrant, as may the planning board, the select board, various town departments. We, unlike most communities, we have five pre-town meeting hearings, three by the finance committee, one by the planning board, and one by the select board, so that every article that is going to come up for a vote at town meeting is discussed at a publicly noticed hearing like this, which is also recorded and televised before we get to town meeting. We also publish on the website, well, copy, the copy of the warrant goes to every household in Concord, a copy of the finance committee report thereafter, making recommendations on all the warrant articles, goes to every household in town. The warrant goes on the website, and the hearings and the presentations that are made at hearings and handouts are all placed on the website under the town meeting tab as well. So, that's the process.
And I would add to that, that before an article makes it onto warrant, in this particular instance, review and discussion about the wireless overlay district was part of the planning board's goals document that was published in July and put on our current meeting documents, discussed in public meetings in July, again in August, remained on our goals list for the year, and then was, as I mentioned in the presentation, discussed at three separate public meetings. Agendas are published 48 hours in. But I want to acknowledge what Mr. Crozier said. We did not personally inform the owner, Middlesex School, about our discussions. They were publicly noticed, though.
But it's not applied?
No. Any other questions or clarifications about this article? Then we'll move on to Article 31, handicap parking.
Hopefully, this is a pretty straightforward one. Article 31 is a revision to Section 7.7.37 as it relates to handicap parking. It addresses a language change or a name change in what was the Architectural Barriers Board. It is now, and I think has been for a while now, the Architectural Access Board. And it also removes the language stating that it's part of the Department of Public Safety. I think that also has been a change for a while. It's now sort of, it doesn't exist under that. It's now sort of, it doesn't exist under that, or as that, any longer. So this warrant article is just to update the language in this section, and I think that's about it. So if there are any questions? Not seeing any? Alright, that's Article 31.
Article 32 is the Groundwater Conservancy District. Is that that one? I'll do it.
I can hear.
Have to read through it. Article 32, groundwater changes to the groundwater conservancy district. The warrant article changes Section 7.6.5.8 in the following manner. Essentially, this is just making our zoning bylaw consistent with Title V, which defines an acre as 40,000 square feet, rather than the traditional acre of 42,000 some odd feet. So by replacing this language, yes, an acre is 43,560 square feet. Under Title V, an acre is defined as 40,000 square feet. So the proposed amendment will bring Section 7.6.5.8 of the bylaw in conformance with Title V. So this is more or less a housekeeping article that will make our zoning bylaw consistent with state law. Next slide.
That's it.
Okay. Any questions about coming into compliance with state law? Yes. Article 33. Rob Easton.
This is the Marijuana Establishment Temporary Moratorium. As a little bit of history, in 2018, the Annual Town Meeting passed a general bylaw that prohibits all marijuana establishments, and then the town, a general bylaw ratified at the June 12, 2018 special town election passed that bylaw. And so the Marijuana Establishment Temporary Moratorium is therefore no longer necessary. This warrant article deletes Section 4.8, and there is no change under Section 4.3.9 for registered marijuana dispensaries. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Article 34, Burton Flint.
Alright, this one's also essentially a housekeeping or cleaning up a formatting error in Article 7, in Section 7.1.5. 7.1 deals with nonconforming uses. 7.1.5 specifically deals with nonconforming single and two-family structures, and there is a, describes when a nonconforming use can be altered, and there, it currently lists four circumstances under which a alteration is not considered an increase in the nonconforming character, which means that that change could be made. The fourth provision, which is Item D, says, it states, "An extension of a structure by more than 50% is based on the aggregate of all expansions undertaken within a consecutive five-year period." That really is a qualifier that should apply to the three prior sections. So this change would move that qualifier of the, of alterations made in the five prior years up into the primary section, so it would apply to A, B, and C as well. So in other words, Item D is not a circumstance that shall be deemed, shall not be deemed to increase the nonconforming nature of a structure, rather, it is a qualif, it's a descriptive qualification of a 50% increase, being limited to the period within five, the five preceding years. Any questions? Thanks.
Article 35? Excellent.
Article 35 has to do with fairs, bazaars, antique shows-
Suppers and dances.
Suppers and dances. And so Section 5, 5.4.5 requires municipal, educational, or religious organization or private lodge or club to get a special permit for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers, dances, or similar events if they are conducted outside or last longer than three days. The town often holds outdoor events, as an example, picnic in the park, Stowe Street Block Party, Jazz Fest, Drop Off/Swap Off, and Discover West Concord Day. These events are coordinated through various town departments, the select board, town manager, police chief, and no beneficial purpose for the town to get, there's no beneficial purpose for the town to get a special permit. This proposed amendment deletes the word municipal and adds the following statement: "Any such event held by the town of Concord, or on any building or premises owned by or operated by the town of Concord shall not be subject to the restrictions of this section or the requirement to obtain a special permit hereunder." Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Oops, spoke too soon?
Maybe there's one question?
There might be.
Elise Woodward, Garfield Road. So my question is, just a clarification, the Umbrella is an organization that operates in a building that's owned by the town of Concord. So what would happen to the Umbrella with this amendment? Would they need a special permit, or would they not?
If it was a private party within, we should clarify that. Yeah.
I think, yeah, we don't have to answer it right now. We should take that back.
Right. We'll have to think about it, but it does suggest that if it's held by the town of Concord, or on any building-
Yeah, it seems like it would not be so.
Right.
It would not be the only-
Yeah.
Right.
It's a good point.
But I think that there is, there are some non-
Sorry, yeah.
So I guess my general point is that there are nonprofit organizations that do operate within buildings that are owned by the town, and so some clarification of what would happen with the, with, and they do have special events, so that would be a clarification.
Thank you. It's a good point.
It's an excellent question.
Yeah. We will take that back to town council and clarify before town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Alright, that's me. Article 36. Article 36 deals with our floodplain conservancy district. The Federal Emergency Management Agency issued a letter of map revision for a portion of Concord River close to Millbrook on February 9, 2018. This letter of map revision reduced the 100-year floodplain elevation on the flood insurance rate map in a couple of specific locations between six inches to two feet. It's not a significant decrease in the elevation of the floodplain, but it is in fact a decrease. What does that mean? On this map, on the right-hand side here, you can see the prior map of the floodplain conservancy district, and you can see some of the cross-sections of the map. You can see there's one labeled A where the arrow is pointing, then downstream, or maybe that's upstream, there's a cross-section through Area B, through Area C, through Area D, and so on. On the left, you see a page of data that corresponds to the floodplain elevation at each of those cross-sections, and at Point A, at Cross Section A on the floodplain map right now, the old regulatory standard was 120.2 feet. Through this letter of map revision issued February 9, they have, in addition to updating the colors on the chart, if you look at the Cross Section A, and specifically look at the data on Cross Section A on the left-hand side, you see that the floodplain elevation is now 119.7 feet instead of 120.2 feet. This is not a significant difference, and certainly not a difference that would show up on the map. The ground, the floodplain conservancy district basically, you know, even though it's a couple inches lower, occupies the same area from, when viewed from above. However, and all the other data on the page is essentially the same, it's really sort of, you know, a very limited area where they changed this map. But there are implications for adopting the change for homeowners and property owners. First of all, for the town to be in compliance, we need to adopt the most recent floodplain maps, and town compliance means homeowners can continue to obtain federal flood insurance. This is a good thing. And with a slightly lower 100-year floodplain in a couple of, you know, feet of the town, property owners who own those parcels may need perhaps less flood insurance, or possibly not even need it. Why is the amendment necessary? Well, the National Flood Insurance Program requires us to have accurate maps. The floodplain conservancy district boundary is a zoning overlay. It requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting in order to change it, so this warrant article will update the firm map reference so that we are in compliance. Again, it's more or less another housekeeping change, but we like to do this every year so that our zoning bylaw remains current and updated and accurate. Any questions about Article 36? Is last, Burton.
This is very much a cleanup article. This is to amend, to provide, well, back in 2012, a new Section 7.9 was added to the zoning bylaws that specifies essentially how and where and under what review process large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations can be put, and those are essentially utility-scale photovoltaic. What was not done at that time was, it was not, so, and that provides that those can be put in any zoning district of the town, subject to a plan review. What was not done at that time was, it was not added to the very handy schedule of primary uses, which is in the zoning code, which essentially lists all those primary uses which are, have their own section in the zoning code, and shows what districts they can be, those can be in, and what level of review is required. And accordingly, if you want to add it to that table of uses, you need to, you need to name it, and you would name it large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, and you would need to define that. So this amendment does two things. It adds to Section 4.4 the definition of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, which is exactly the language from the existing 7.9, the first sentence, the first section of 7.9, and then it adds a line to that table of principal uses where these installations can go and what level of review is required. So it is, it is not changing any substance of the bylaws, it's just essentially adding it to that table with a definition. Any questions?
Last chance for any questions or comments. Otherwise, this concludes our public hearing, and do I have to, do we have to make a motion or anything to close the public hearing, or just state it? Alright, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Any second?
Second.
Nathan seconded. All in favor?
So closed.
Thank you all for coming.